Good evening, everyone. The time is 6:33 on Tuesday, April 11th, and I'd like to call this meeting to order. First up is our consent agenda, minutes from March 28th. I shouldn't have just run up. Any questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, I'll take the motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes from March 28th.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next up is warrants 60 and 62. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll take the motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the warrants 60 and 62.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Next is visitors' comments. Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee must sign in with the administrative assistant prior to the opening of the regular session of the school committee. The visitor will identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for no longer than three minutes. For anyone unable to sign in ahead of time, we ask that you clearly state your name and address so that this information can be included in the record for the meeting. Okay. All right, Marcus, you're up.
Okay. Faith couldn't be with us tonight, but that's okay. We all got introduced to her last time, and I hope she'll be at the next one. We have eighth, 10th, and 12th. We'll be taking a Preventions Needs Assessment this week. End of year activities, including seventh grade step-up night, senior activities, underclassmen awards, junior high awards are all in the RAM report. Junior high field trip to Look Park, both for seventh and eighth grade. They're going on separate days. Prom will be held at Union Station on April 29th. On May 10th, we'll have a meeting with incoming seventh graders. The equity team has reconvened after a short little break from COVID. They've come back together. We have the staff versus student basketball game this Friday before break next week. Decision day for seniors to select their colleges is May 1st. Next-year section has been added on to the RAM report. There's a possibility of looking into the future, having junior high, having a homeroom system. We have stepped away from that for all my time in the high school, at least, and they're looking to possibly re-implement that. We have a schedule committee teacher is planning to visit Hopkins Academy to see how their schedule runs, and because we've looked at how their schedule is, and they're going to compare, see what they can learn from them. In regards to the new student drop-off system in the morning, the parents no longer are asked, they're asked to drop over on the staff side instead of in the student side. And a quote from a student is, "It's so much better without parents dropping kids off." I have to agree. Our attendance rate is slowly increasing. May, I said that? Oh. We have a decisions page account for seniors on Instagram that I make little like graphics that say where they're going, their name, and what their major is. If they have a minor, if they're playing a sport, if they're going into a trade, all that, all their plans for next year, it's on Instagram. And I use a program called GIMP, which I learned how to use in freshman year in my graphics class with Mr. Kearns, so it's still being used to this day. There will be a ribbon-cutting ceremony at the basketball courts on May 19th at 1:00 p.m. And there's an info session tomorrow night, or Thursday night, in the gym for the senior trip for parents and kids alike.
Excellent. Anything about graduation yet? Nope.
Not this time.
Not this time, all right. Any questions or comments for Marcus? Any update on the dinosaur painting?
The vote is out. We don't have an officially picked one, but the vote is out for students to pick.
When does it close?
Good question.
This week, I believe. I know it went out to East Meadow.
I would assume probably Friday.
On Monday, I think it closes for the high school this week. And East Meadow, they were having teachers take a tally of the four options and then submitting that because East Meadow students don't all have email addresses, so again, so that was something they had to kind of work around.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is our vote on fiscal year 24.
So. We did manage to work through, and I think as of last week, we were still working on about a $90,000 deficit. We did manage to reduce that. So the deficit is technically, it's not zero. We are asking for that additional town allocation of $600,000. That is the same amount that the town provided last year. And again, I think just important to reiterate that while this is a 4% increase from year to year, there are fairly significant cuts made in this, in this budget. It's not a level service budget. So I think it's just important to remember that. And, but I am recommending to the committee to vote on the total school operating budget of $9,528,874 for fiscal year 2024. Continue to have productive conversations with the town administrator and select board. I shared this budget summary with the Mr. Liberah from the finance committee earlier today, along with some questions that they had about the last four years, five years of special ed, specifically out-of-district funding. So we did supply that today and offered, if he had questions, happy to try to meet. My hope is that we can be on the same page for town meeting. I think we showed last year that that was a productive approach. And I think we were able to take out some of the challenges in previous iterations of school budgets last year. So again, appreciate the committee's feedback, the feedback that we received from the community, leadership team, faculty, and staff at both schools. It's been a challenging process and, you know, but I'm hopeful that we can manage this budget in a responsible way and not have any additional asks to the town. But again, I think it's important people know that all of this is subject to change at town meeting. You know, citizens can make amendments on town meeting floor. So just because the school committee may approve a proposed budget or it might be included in the booklet, the work isn't really complete until the town approves a budget for the schools. So I think that's just important to remember.
So where, I don't know if I even want to open the camera arms, but when we looked at it last, was it just last week?
It was.
Gosh. We had like a 90-plus thousand dollar deficit that we were looking. So was it just a little bit from everywhere or?
It was not just a little, we were able to, we identified a couple of chunks in our technology budget that we feel we had a little bit of flexibility with because there is the potential for some reimbursement in those places. And it might mean putting certain things off for another year, replacing laptops or Chromebooks or getting as many as we had hoped to. So those are some of the things that, you know, again, I keep saying that this is like a lie. It's a living and breathing thing because so much changes from the time we start planning it to the time that it gets approved, to the time that we start implementing it. We're continuing to look at grants and other things that could help offset anything that was reduced from the budget.
My question's regarding transportation. Obviously, we don't have a firm on the budget. Would we go with that original, which was significantly like 60,000 less, wasn't it?
It was about 60,000 less from the second bid, yes.
But that's what we were told to do by the administrator, right? I think we.
Yeah. I am, when I spoke with the town administrator, I let him know that we kept that number in even though the bid was, it was going back out to bid. So I did communicate that to him. And that is, the last that we heard from that is it's still going back out to bid.
So they haven't even finalized that process or?
No. We got the letter from.
But that lives, resides with where and who?
Where, Beltratown in Granby.
So who's in charge of it?
Where. Where is the.
Lead school or whatever?
Lead school, lead district of it.
Okay. So last time we went out to bid, it was kind of a couple-month-long process. What do we do then as far as submitting for? I'm extrapolating from what Audrey was thinking, but if we put in this 948 and change article in for town meeting, but I guess we can't just play with a number, right? Like we can't just, that's what we have?
Right, yeah, it's, it is a bit of an unknown. So I know in some cases, towns have said approve up to this number. So instead of it being 948, is it become 988? Or that it can go up until that number, so you're not going above? I'm not sure what the town administrator and select board would, or finance committee would choose to do with that because it is a separate article from the school budget.
Okay. Was that what you were thinking? I'm sorry if I took your.
Nope, I'm fine with that.
Sorry.
I was just curious what number ended up on this, you know, on the sheet.
Yeah. And part of the reason that the bid was rejected is because these are the numbers that the three districts budgeted on once that bid was approved, and then it was protested after. So we've continued to work with that number while communicating to the town that this is going back out to bid based on the protest.
And even our original number was hot, was lower than the second lowest bid of. So everything we were working with was lower, so that was another reason.
I guess that's more of my concern is that, you know, here we are, right headed towards town meeting with a potentially low number. I don't know. And then how long until are we, I don't know, swallow it or how that works? It's just concerning.
And again, that's a separate article. So it does not impact the number that the committee would vote on tonight.
And does this current budget keep us at like the level services budget?
This is not a level service budget. This is not a level service budget.
I know like that kind of got brought up last time, I just kind of wanted.
Nope. There's, I forgot the exact number, but there's about $700,000 in cuts and reductions from '23 to '24 in this budget.
Okay, just I know like.
And a lot of that is those placements and inflation and the 14%.
14% in out-of-district tuition that increased the budget. Yep, all of those factors have really made it difficult to have a level service. A level service budget, you're probably looking at closer to that OSD number of a 14% increase where this from '23 to '24, this is a 4% increase from our '23 ask to our '24 ask.
Right. I should preface that by just saying I'll kind of like explain that. That was a great explanation. I knew the answer. I don't know if other people know that answer. I heard some, you know, people are thinking, oh no, we can absorb everything. Like it was, which we are doing a great job of, but that is the facts of what we're.
Yeah, I think it would be naive of me to say there's no impact to these cuts. There's going to be an impact. I think it's difficult to predict what that true impact is until we start working with it because again, things change over the course of time, right? We could have a new hire come in over what we budgeted for a certain position or under. Or we could get relief to that 14% increase from OSD. There's so many things that could impact how the budget really plays out over the course of the year. But we have to go with the information that we have now. So yeah, it, fair question, it is not a level service budget. There are significant reductions from '23 to '24.
And that was like in that sheet that we had for, from last week's hearing? You know, it was from a bunch of different areas.
Yeah, I think every, like, when you look at the budget by department, every one of those departments was impacted. I mean, transportation notwithstanding, it's impacted, but in a different way.
We'll be able to incorporate some of that stuff when we work on our sheet for what we bring to town meeting, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Any other questions on the budget? I wish, do, have you heard anything as far as like MASs or, you know, in conversation with our representatives? Like, do we have any, any, anything from anybody?
For the hold harmless? I think there's still some concern that the way, the language in the bill at the House is, sets up the potential for a group of winners and losers and not everybody being held harmless. I think Mass Association of School Superintendents and other organizations are pushing to say, hold harmless, even if you hold harmless at 12%, based on the last decade of that 2% average, saying, okay, the districts could handle the 2% if you can cover the 12%. But there is some language that is concerning in, in that bill that we're advocating with our legislators, from Granby, reps Dome and Carey and Senator Olivera. We're trying to work with them to say like, these are the impacts. Again, we're not advocating. I don't know right now if we're in the winners or losers group based on that language. But I think if we're thinking about an equitable approach, that this is going to impact every district. So if we could hold districts harmless for that 12% or something thereabouts, I think that would be a win for all districts. And the other thing, and I mentioned it last week, is looking ahead to FY25, even if we were to be held harmless this year, that 14% isn't going anywhere. So when we start our budgeting next year, if we were held harmless for that 12%, our budget starts with that number still built in. So like, there's no talk right now about holding districts harmless for a period of time. It's holding districts harmless for this dramatic unprecedented increase this year. And I think if, not trying to look too far ahead, but when you think of FY25, your budget still starts with that 14%. And who knows what that increase could potentially be next year? So like I said, I don't want to get out ahead of my skis, but.
But I think in thinking about and trying to be mindful and planning ahead, and I think that conversation kind of came up with our joint meeting with FinCom too, is that there are some potential kind of increases in some of the offsets. So when like Circuit Breaker might catch up to some degree, you know, at that point, because you're, you know, you're getting that relief kind of a year later.
Yep.
So if you're held harmless kind of the first year, it might catch up a little bit the second year and those types of things. It's not perfect, but it's at least thinking about it and thinking ahead. It's also maybe not something that would continue to be as insurmountable, you know, the next, this year and the next year and the next year and the, you know, so.
Yeah, and I think there's, that's a good point, Jill. I think there's a lot out there right now in terms, we're talking about this specific bill, but there's a number of bills out there that are talking about lowering the Circuit Breaker threshold, increasing the full reimbursement from 75 to 90%. I don't anticipate all of those things are going to happen. If all of those things happen, I think that would be a really great step for public education. But I can't see that all happening in a short amount of time. So I think to your point, Jill, if a couple of those things happen, if the threshold got lowered and it stayed at 75%, then that still means more money coming back to districts a year out. And with that 14% built in, more students would hit the circuit, which means reimbursement for more students.
Any other questions? You all heard that too, right?
Yeah.
Was there a practice or a game out there? Maybe if something good happened.
Hope so.
Basketball hopes not here, though, they're all the way over. Although there are some out here too, yeah. All right, so if there aren't any other questions, who would like to make the motion? Can't all do it alone?
I make the motion to approve the proposed fiscal year 24 school operating budget of $9,528,874 to submit to the town of Granby in preparation for the annual town meeting.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Nicely done, you guys. All right. Next is the enrollment dashboard.
Yeah, another, I guess, fairly quiet month. Our March number is the same as our February number, but there was one in and one out. One in and one out in ninth grade and one in in kindergarten.
Any questions on the enrollment dashboard?
While we're on it, I had it in my update, but I will just give a brief update. The school choice application window, we discussed a couple weeks ago, is open. We've had 22 applications. They run the gamut from where they are, but the clear leader right now is first grade with eight applications. There's some ones and twos sprinkled in, but one in, or I'm sorry, eight in first grade and five currently for ninth grade.
For next year.
For next year. That's for '23, '24.
Did we end up voting that it had no specific numbers, correct?
Correct. We voted to open the applications in those grades, so. So not totally connected to this year's enrollment dashboard, but I think something that I want to just make sure that we're keeping at the forefront of our minds.
So for our next meeting, I think we should revisit, just kind of get a temperature check on school choice. And I'd like to have some, the information from Donna, from Children First, for what her information looks like with the K's. How many residents and, because I think that was something we were unsure of from the last time, right? Just so that we can maybe start to get a little bit more of a grasp on where we're at and maybe have some discussion on where we are for seats for the grades that we've received applications on. Does that sound right to everybody?
I noticed on the dashboard, there is the '22, '23 school choice seats. And it says application received. Okay, never mind. I didn't know if we were going to add a section that said how many were received for '23, '24. But I guess it doesn't matter yet because we didn't make particular numbers, so I'm good.
When do people that are going to homeschool, do they have to let us know by a certain date?
They have to have their.
Have their curriculum approved.
Curriculum approved. A lot of that tends to happen over the summer. I can get you a little bit more information on it for next time, though.
Yeah, if we're going to have the conversation, it'd be nice just to kind of know where we are.
And can we also reference the census data? Whatever the newest that we have, just again, if we're going to. I know we haven't, it hasn't changed obviously, but just as another.
I know it's unlikely that people that choose to homeschool would come back, but it probably wouldn't be the worst idea to kind of keep track of that too when we're talking about school choice numbers because at any point, those are residents that could come back.
Right.
I don't know.
Well, it's true, I mean, like become.
You just, you never know what life brings you for any case of anybody, so just a little.
Yeah, just us being mindful even with this chart. I think that's the purpose of it, just to be looking at like if.
Yeah, and I see like two being in K, and that's that group we're really trying to watch to keep them small. And we have eight applicants for first, and I don't know, so in my mind.
Anything else that we'd like to see, you know, now that we're sort of getting down to it from this? Or are we feeling pretty good? I still love this tool. Any?
I think it makes the conversation a little easier that we're looking at the same information every month, so.
It's just so nice to track at a quick glance, too. Like, we've been really steady overall since September. Like, we're just within a couple, which I think is good.
Yeah, unfortunately, our lowest month was as of October 1st.
Of course.
Only by a couple students.
That seems to happen to us, I feel like, year over year. There's something in the water in October.
Hang on, doing well, there's like five weeks.
If there's nothing else, then we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
So just want to remind folks that students do have an early release day tomorrow for teachers' professional development. Students at the junior, senior high school will be dismissed at 11:00 and East Meadow at 11:40. Also, schools are closed next week for the April break. And as usual, should you need to meet with somebody from the schools, I would strongly suggest that you set up a time in advance. We do try for administrators too, to use their vacation as much as possible during school vacations so they can be available when students are in. Another reminder, and this will continue to come out over the next couple of weeks, that we did vote to make a calendar change for the May early release day. The early release day in May is May 10th, not May 17th as originally planned. So it is May 10th. I think we now have all the calendars updated. There were a couple that eluded us for a little bit, but I think those are all up to date now and it will be in the weekly newsletters from both principals. I mentioned last week, we've talked a little bit about the summer ESY enrichment. I had hoped to be much further along this year. Unfortunately, there was not a lot of interest in the coordinator position. We did have two interviews last week and are expected to extend an offer to a candidate for the coordinator position this week and hopefully get information out to families very shortly thereafter. It would still put us a little ahead of next year, but not where we had hoped to be. I do think our focus is going to shift to trying to build a strong base in our elementary school with it to try to get those families out. I know the, the police department is offering the basketball camp and there's some other options. So, you know, I think we want to, we said last year, start small. And I think being a little bit more thoughtful and even smaller rather than having a variety of all these options, saying that these are, this is the option, and then build from there. So our hope is to still have some interest. I think we had served about 30 students last year, and our hope is to be above that this year. So I'll make sure I keep people posted. And then a couple of other things. One thing, just want to mention it here, both so the committee can hear it and the community. who've seen the Meadow in front of East Meadow decline in health over the past couple of years. I, I think the first two or three year, two or three years, it did produce some nice flowers and growth. Unfortunately, that has declined over the past couple of years and it's resulted in some other issues that we've had to deal with with some rodents and some snakes. So we are considering just mowing that area because it's not reproducing in the way that it had originally been planned. If people have concerns about this, they can certainly reach out to me directly. It's a decision that's not being made in haste, certainly open to ideas, but want to also try to be preventative from some of those other issues that we've encountered in the past couple of years. And then the last thing I have is testing ramps up as soon as we get back. I know some MCAS has started, but the month of May is between AP, MCAS and senior final exams and stuff like that starts. There is a lot of testing and assessments in the month of May, so keep an eye out in the newsletters. And we do have an assessment calendar that we took off the website, but we're going to add it back up tomorrow morning because we updated a few things. So people can look there and I think it's not our favorite month because there is so much testing. But I don't know, any questions about any of that? Little variety, everything from the Meadow to half days to assessment, so.
All right, Todd.
Budget was.
Your big thank.
Consumed us.
I, I hate to ask, but eh, where are we with the kitchen? Anywhere? Is, do we know? Has it gone out or is there a committee even?
We have not gotten specifics back on that. We did send it. I've talked to Chris a couple of times about it. He said he has it. He was reviewing it and he was going to get back to me. Last week we talked and it was a brief conversation and was strictly about the budget. But I can certainly circle back.
When you say he has it, he has the, like, he's, he's received?
Draft of the RFP.
Okay, so, so I'm understanding this and so I don't lose my cool. It's April eleventh. This was voted on May ninth of last year. So almost a solid year.
Correct.
And we don't even have an RFP.
The RFP is not posted. We drafted an RFP. We, when we met with Chris, we asked if it would be helpful for us to try to draft it. He thought that might move things along a little bit more quickly, so we did that and we, we sent it to him.
May I ask, what is the next step? Like.
It would have to be post, it would have to be, it has to go out to bid.
But is the committee chosen to review it?
The committee typically gets chosen when the bid gets posted because they review the bids.
Okay, thank you.
So we just do like a temp check, get like a follow-up? Is that basically where we are? Just like a.
Yep.
Do we get on like some sort of schedule to follow up? Follow up to my follow-up?
Of course.
And I realize it's budget season, so I'm sure that Chris has got a lot going on because of it being budget season. I get that wholeheartedly. But I didn't know if there was like additional things. It's just to post it.
And again, we, Todd took a stab at it. Again, we, because Chris is the chief procurement officer, it needs to go through him regardless. We just try to provide all the information that would be needed, other than dates and some of the other things that would have to be added into it. But like, again, I don't know if he would have feedback that we could change, so like I said, I will certainly follow up again. I've talked to him twice about it and I've talked to him a handful of other times in the past couple of weeks. But some of those have been really quick and really about the budget.
I'm just, I have to say, I'm just concerned because what was voted on was a very specific dollar amount based on a quote that we had had that's now more than a year old. So with inflation and everything else, I'm just concerned that it's not going to be enough to fully do the job. And so it's stressing me out a little bit. And it's not a knock on anyone. It's just like, what do we need to do? How do we go about doing whatever it is we're supposed to do better so that, is it something we need to do better? Is it something we should, I don't know. I'm just, it's a frustration thing. It's not at any, directed at any particular person. I'm just frustrated.
Understood. I will follow up and if I have a response, I will include it in this week's update.
Thank you. Jill?
So we met for CES on March twenty-ninth. It was the first like hybrid meeting, so some of us were there in person. Some people were still virtual. It was nice to see people in person and some people got to tour the facilities if they've not been there before. Yeah, and just, just different areas were reviewed, programs. But one of the main things that was kind of talked about was districts and what services they kind of currently take advantage of. It was kind of broken down into, you know, checkboxes basically in terms of anywhere from kind of evaluations and related services right through like after-school programs and right on through. So it was nice to see, you know, Granby had a lot of check marks in there or, you know, X's through things that they could take advantage of through CES. And so it was nice to see those pieces. And, you know, they just reviewed their own programming and supports that offer, you know, students through DYS and SCIF, some supports too. And so, you know, making sure that all students receive access to education. And that was pretty much it.
Awesome. All right, so for our next meeting, we talked about, we'll have some school choice discussion and it should be a what's the word? Subcommittee meeting. I feel like since we just voted on the budget, we maybe don't need to have a budget one this time, so we can have one of the other ones finally, but.
You remember onboarding? Have you had one yet?
No, I sort of got swallowed up unfortunately, because I was on that one as well, so I can't, couldn't be in both places. So onboarding and then do you guys need to meet again for policy?
Yeah, because we didn't get as far as probably we'd like to with the I J O A.
All right, anything else for next, next time?
Do you want to put evaluation subcommittee on there too? Just so you have it and you two are both, so.
If you don't think we need it, then, I mean, we're definitely going to have a lot to do with I J O A. And then do we talk at all quick about community relations as far as the town meeting?
Sure.
Why don't we put all four on and then we'll, we'll, that way we'll cover and we can.
We can set a time for what needs.
Right. Jill, you gave it to me.
I was going to say, did that do it?
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. If there's nothing else, we'll vote to go into executive session.
And I guess I just wanted to confirm that I'll present my evaluation on May ninth. Is that the plan?
Yeah.
Okay. Again, thank you to the committee for being open to that. I do appreciate it.
Okay, we'll vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, Part A three to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining, as doing so in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session. Could you do a roll call, please?
Ms. Paul here?
Aye.
Ms. Schudau?
Yes.
Mr. Paul here.
Aye.
Hi.
Ms. Parker.
Aye. Thanks, everybody.